Okay, thank you everybody. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order at 7:30 PM. Can we have the roll?
Slow roll, slow roll.
Take the roll very slowly.
Village President Torpe.
Village President Torpe is here.
Trustee Clark.
T-R-E-S-E-N-T.
Trustee Cullen.
Here.
Trustee Davis Ford.
I believe that I'm here.
Trustee Levinson.
Present.
Trustee Rosner.
Here.
Trustee Schnall.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Lerner.
Here.
Mr. Rother.
Here.
Susan Caljean, present. An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the press in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6. In addition, notice of this meeting was posted in Village Hall and on the Village website and has been filed in the office of the Village Clerk. Official action may be taken. Susan Caljean, Village Clerk.
Thank you. So let's start with our one resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution 2015-92 authorizing an executive session at the May 11th, 2015, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to discuss the following. One, attorney-client privilege, parking issues. Two, attorney-client privilege, contract negotiations, water issues.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Move.
Moved by Trustee Levinson, seconded by Trustee Schnall. All in favor?
Aye.
Any proposed extensions? Okay, thank you. We'll be back in five.
The hours for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday are 12 to 8:00 PM, and then the pool will be open weekends through June 21st, and then will be open daily starting on Saturday, June 27th. You do need a recreation ID badge to access the pool, and you can get one from the Bear at 5 Mead Street from 9:00 to 9:30 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 9:00 AM to 4:30 PM Friday and Saturday. So make sure to do that. Also, just a reminder to please join us if you can for our traditional Memorial Day service, which is Monday, May 25th at 10:30 AM at Memorial Rock near the Duck Pond. To start off tonight, we have a special proclamation that I'm going to present here for our public library. So I'm going to read this off and then invite members from our library and library board to come up and accept it. So this is honoring the 150th anniversary of the South Orange Public Library. This is going to be a little bit of a history lesson here. Whereas, in November 1864, William V., the South Orange Villager invited some friends to his home to discuss the creation of a local library, an idea which was enthusiastically received, and so the South Orange Library Association began. Many in the village donated their money, books, time, and effort to help the library grow. And whereas the library was located in various buildings, in 1895, the library board sought a larger space for the growing library. Eugene Canet offered his own land on the corner of Scotland Road and Taylor Place, provided the library society raises sum of $7,500 for the completion of the building. Whereas, in 1886, the association went from a private membership to its current status as a free public library available to all citizens of the community, and in 1896, the library building opened. The library trustees renamed the building in honor of Mr. and Mrs. Eugene Canet after their passing, and in 1930, added a rear wing and children's reading room. And whereas, the library director's report of 1960 stated, "Moderate interests have sought a meeting of minds and an exchange of ideas in a process that continues long after formal education has been completed. The public library has become a cultural center for the entire community." The new and current library building was completed and dedicated in November 1968. And whereas it is the vision of today's dedicated library board and the South Orange Public Library to continue to be the integral physical and virtual gateway by which our community may access information, congregate to freely exchange ideas, celebrate literacy and cultural growth in a leisurely, yet lively atmosphere, and to receive individualized services. And whereas the library board recognizes the importance of both physical space and the virtual in providing a community place to gather for meeting space and quiet study, to serve the needs of all, to provide space and support for local individuals and organizations to curate local history, and to make it simple to access resources and emerging technologies in an increasingly information-laden world, now therefore be proclaimed by the South Orange Village Board of Trustees, on behalf of the entire Village of South Orange, its sincere appreciation is hereby expressed, acknowledging 150 years of reading, discussion, information sharing, and evolving services provided by the South Orange Library, which at 150 years is still young and growing. South Orange Village applauds the public library's dedication to providing an environment for all residents to nurture our collective community love for learning. So I'd like to invite representatives from the library and the library board to come on up. Thank you for that brief remarks from the library. We could all learn a lesson from that. Is there anything that any of you would like to say? Not to put you too much on the spot. You do have to come up to the microphone though.
Thank you so much. My name's Karen Hartzorn Hilton, and I'm honored to be the board chair of the South Orange Public Library. And I wasn't prepared to speak, but I'm honored to speak. I want to thank the village trustees for their leadership and their guidance and their vision and their support of our library services. I also want to thank my fellow trustees who are here tonight with me, and I want to thank our wonderful library director, Melissa Kopecky, who's also here with me today, and our library staff who worked tirelessly, day in and day out, for providing awesome library services. So the library board is hard at work, as you well know, working hard planning our future, working on thinking through our current spaces with our existing library and our Canet building, and we anticipate coming back to you in the very near future, talking about letting you know our plans and on how we're proceeding slowly, deliberately, carefully, thinking through what we want to do next. So thank you so much for honoring and look forward to celebrating our 150th year in this coming year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So before we move on to our ordinances for second reading, I do just want to open the meeting up for public comment. If anybody does have, we're going to have an opportunity for public comment a little bit later on. It's no secret that this is my last meeting as village president. So if there's anybody who wants to speak to that, we'd ask you to sort of save that till later in the meeting. But if there's anybody else who wishes to speak at this point before taking the action, just please come forward. Okay, seeing as there are no members of the public who wish to speak, I'd like to close public comments and move on to our ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2015-07, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the township zoning map in order to set forth the boundaries of the previously approved and existing Special District A overlay zone located in the university zone.
Thank you. So just as it says, it's just clarifying the boundary zoning districts that already exist. I don't know, Mr. Lewis, if there's anything that you want to add.
Yeah, this just zooms in on and gives a measurable meets and bounds description of the university zone line. I would also add, and I'll touch on this more importantly on the next ordinance, but we did receive back from the planning board, but it was too late to get it in the packages of report. But for purposes of this ordinance, the planning board did find this consistent with the master plan and had no concerns with this ordinance.
Thank you. So seeing as this is the second reading of this ordinance, I'd like to open up for public hearing. So if there's anybody from the public who wishes to comment on this ordinance specifically, you may come forward. All right, seeing as there are no members of the public to comment on this ordinance, I'd like to close the public hearing unless there's any further questions or comments. Ask for a motion from the board.
Move.
Move by trustee Levinson.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Cullen. Can we have the roll please?
Trustee Levinson.
Yes.
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnell.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ward.
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2015-08, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of South Orange Village, Section 92-162B, 6A, with respect to warnings.
Thank you. So this one, we also got a recommendation back from the planning board that's a little bit different, and so I was going to ask Mr. Lewis if you just wanted to.
Yeah, again, because we got the report, it was too late to put it in your packages, and the planning board did have some concerns and suggestions about this ordinance. Our recommendation would be to carry this until later date, and potentially it may wind up being reintroduced as part of a broader revision.
It would have to be reintroduced.
Right, because of the change of governing bodies.
Exactly.
But I think given, again, that the planning board had some concerns, and I think we want to, you know, in due deference to the planning board and to review their concerns, both as it relates to master plan, but also in the broader just comments that they have, I think the appropriate thing to do at this point would be to hold off on this, and then we'll revisit this. And again, it may be potentially caught up in a bigger sort of overhaul that is in the works.
Can I ask that members of the business code review task force also receive a copy of the planning board's comment?
Certainly. I will make sure and forward that to them.
Okay, I move to table.
Okay.
Should we table it, or should we go ahead and strike it?
I'd strike the enacting clause and start over.
Okay.
Sorry, before you, was there another comment?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So there's a motion to strike this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, seconded by trustee Davis Ford. Can, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Ordinance 2015-09, second reading and public hearing of an ordinance delegating the authority to approve the granting of raffle licenses to the village clerk.
Thank you. This is exactly as it sounds. Again, one of the most controversial ordinances that we've had here, delegating this tremendous power to our village clerk.
I move.
And before you do that, just because it is a second reading, I do have to open it up for public hearing. So if there's anybody who wishes to speak on this ordinance, please come forward. Seeing as there is nobody to speak on this, I'd like to close the public hearing, and it sounds like trustee Davis Ford would like to move.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Schnell. Can we have the roll please?
Trustee Rosner.
Yes.
Trustee Schnell.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Cullen.
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford.
Yes.
Trustee Levinson.
Levinson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to our resolutions on our consent agenda.
Resolutions 2015-93 through 2015-98 are on the consent agenda.
Okay, I think there are a couple of comments on a few of these. Let's just start at the top. Mr. Lewis, I was wondering if you could just comment briefly on 2015-93, which is relevant to some of the paving and curbing processes that we've emailed in back and forth with a lot of residents about.
Correct, and this is an area particularly up in the north Newstead area where the roads, they were bad enough, and they were already way up on the priority list, and potentially get to them this year or next year. They really, the winter took a toll on them. They are in really horrible condition. So we've sort of, and after discussions with the board and given our sort of conservative spending last year, we had the opportunity to increase our capital a little bit this year and still stay on our program of reducing our debt by half a million a year. So with the consensus of the board, we're going to move forward and be able to do some of those streets. So this is sort of the first step in the process. This authorizes a contract with the entity DNL Paving that has the Morris County Cooperative Pricing Council contract for curb removal and replacement. The first step up there will be to remove the existing curbs, which are probably in as bad a shape as the road surface, replace the curbs with new Belgian block curbing, as was done on Glenview and some of the other streets up there. The next phase after that would be the paving. So this first phase covers Mountain Crestwood, Grace Hills, and North Woods. The other sort of two streets, Phase Two of that would be Longview and Brentwood, depending on the outcome of funding on some of the other projects and things that would be potentially at the end of this year and certainly no later than first thing next year.
One of the things that I think was important to note, just considering how many, how much correspondence we do about the paving of the roads, was that these roads are the order in which the roads are in for getting paved. This doesn't change the order, right? That this is just taking the ones that were, this actually moves everybody up the list a little bit.
Yeah, by the ability, and again, with our sort of, we didn't spend as much last year not knowing what the village hall bids. We're going to come in and a couple of other contingencies that we now know that gave us the flexibility to increase our capital program this year with essentially the monies we didn't use last year, so that essentially moved these. These roads were going to be on the list either for late this year, or more likely than not, early next year, but they were certainly in the same spot on the list. The other roads that were already on the list are going to stay in place, but these are the ones that, and again, because we're doing them through the county co-op, it allows us to move a little quicker. Some of the other road projects, Terrell, for example, the plans are down at the Department of Transportation being reviewed because there's grant funding involved. There's a time process that we have to wait until they approve them. So those projects are not as ready to go as these. That's why we're moving forward on these as soon as possible.
Thank you. Okay, I know we wanted to touch on 97 as well.
Yeah, and again, I did send out a memo to the board, and my apologies. An hour and this inadvertently jumped onto the agenda when it was not. This was a resolution that came in from Redevelopment Council after consultation with the village planner. It related to the ongoing Irvington Avenue redevelopment studies that were commenced last summer, and was reflective of the planner's works and investigation to date, some changes in the case law and an evolution of the criteria, and the recommendation that, and again, this resolution, the intent was for it to go to the Planning and Zoning Committee first, and again, it inadvertently got on the agenda. I still believe it needs to go before the Planning and Zoning Committee to vet. Just for anyone who happened to see it, the net effect of this was, if you recall, last year, we authorized redevelopment studies on a total of eight areas on Irvington Avenue. The preliminary determinations by the planner after doing all their due diligence, investigation, police reports, code enforcement reports, physical inspections, was that six of the eight areas seemed unlikely to meet that criteria, and so the effect of this is essentially to amend the prior authorizing eight resolutions, eliminate six of them, and only continue the investigations on two of the areas, which are the two larger sort of grouping of lots. One is on the, I guess that would be on the right-hand side as you're leaving town, and the other is the sort of the car wash site. So these, again, are the same studies that have already been ongoing. This eliminates and sort of pulls the plug on six of them rather than continue to spend money studying and pay for a report and everything if it doesn't look like it's going to be there. So no new studies, no new areas.
So Barry, your recommendation is this should be pulled and sent back.
Yeah, the intent was this was going to be reviewed by Planning and Zoning. I still recommend pulling this at this point, let Planning and Zoning review it, and then come back with a recommendation that there's not a particular time sensitivity. And again, I do apologize for the, it being inadvertently hitting the agenda.
So everybody's okay with taking 97 out?
And we also want that in the Seaton Village Committee too, because I got some questions from those committee members what this was.
Okay, so Planning and Zoning in Seaton Village will take a look before it comes back. Were there other questions or comments on any consent agenda items?
Can you go over the sewer user charge?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. That's Resolution 2015-94. As most people will know, every year we set our annual sewer user charge. It has not, the underlying base sewer user charge has been $260 per individual residential account. It's obviously higher for commercial accounts, multifamily, et cetera. It's been $260 since 2011. Has not been increased that. Shortly thereafter in 2012 and 13, we saw a dramatic increase in our bills from the joint meeting, who is the entity that processes sewage, and that was directly related to the Passaic River ongoing environmental litigation. Because that increase was largely attributed to that, we, rather than increase the base fee, we just assessed a sort of litigation surcharge of $25 per account. In the intervening years, that litigation continued for a couple of years. We had to repeat the surcharge last year. Fortunately, there was a settlement that was approved by the DEP and the state, et cetera, that has hopefully stemmed the tide. There's still some legal fees associated with it, but up to large hit. However, in the interim, as with everything else, the joint meeting's day-to-day expenses have gone up. Recognizing that we already put the surcharge on, we have not done a cost of living increase since 2011. Our invoice from the joint meeting has gone up almost 7% per year in the last four years. So what we're doing this year, the net effect on the average homeowner, actually your overall bill goes down $5. We've now been in a position to eliminate the litigation surcharge, and having taken that away, we're now going to do the cost of living adjustment. It's less than 2%, which again, our bill from the joint meeting has gone up 7% a year, but so the bill is now 280. But the net effect is it's $5 less than it's been the last two years.
Thank you.
Why, why are they increasing 7% a year?
There is, like all other infrastructure, there's a lot of capital investment that's going on, and that was deferred because of the legal issues that we've had in the last couple of years. So they're now catching back up with the capital investments. Part of it, we had a bond issue, which we had to support as part of it as well.
Are you anticipating they're going to continue rising at this rate, at 7%?
Maybe not at this rate, but there is a lot of capital improvement that needs to be done, especially Sandy has some implications on what they have to do at the site.
And is it also the capital improvement that has not been done as it should have been, and now?
It was deferred. Union, the city of Union asked for a year or two deferment on the capital improvements so that they could adjust their surcharge as well. There is significantly less pressure compared to the other municipalities, and to then pay for the legal fees. The legal fees were millions of dollars during this litigation. Barry, the one other thing that I think we talked about today was the number that was put in the resolution as the dollar amount.
Yeah, and the resolution, and trustee Levinson pointed out to me today, I did not prepare, that that's basically a boilerplate that the village has used. It reflects our charge, although actually that number is not even the correct 2015 number of the charge from the joint meeting, but there are additional, significant additional sewer expenses that go into our overall rate calculation. They include, obviously, a personnel at the Department of Public Works that are related to and do work on sewers. We maintain the jet vac machine. We clear out clogs. They do markouts. They clear lines. We have, obviously, costs and benefits associated with the salaries of the tax collector's office that collects the sewer bills, pays, you know, posts them, mails them out. Does that function?
And debt service.
What's that?
Debt service.
And we also, in addition to the capital of the joint meeting, which really only relates to their facility, we have our own capital program that replaces and repairs typically coinciding with our road projects. We will go in and send video cameras through the sewer lines, replace sections that are failing. We have our own capital debt program that has debt service associated with the sewers. So the joint meeting bill itself represents probably a little more of So the joint meeting bill itself represents probably a little more than 50% of the overall cost, but we have significant other costs that are not sort of spelled out in the resolution and one might read the resolution and think that that's the only expense, but there's certainly significantly more.
Thank you.
I move the consent agenda with the exception of Resolution 201597.
Okay, moved by Trustee Cullen, seconded by Trustee Rosner. Could we have their roll, please?
Trustee Schaal?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Trustee Collum?
Yes.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yes.
Trustee Levison?
Yes.
Trustee Rosner?
Yes.
Thank you. So let's move on to our reports. I'm going to defer my report because I'm going to be talking enough in a moment and move on to the trustee reports. Trustee Cullen?
This is going to be a short one. Just, I'll make one announcement and then I'll defer to the next meeting. The positive behavior citations are pretty fabulous right now. I see Police Chief Jim Shalhoub in the audience. We've gotten tons of just great feedback from parents. For those in the audience not familiar, right now our police department, specifically under our Community Relations Bureau, they have positive behavior citations that they're issuing to youth in the community when they see somebody, a student, doing something good for their community or exhibiting positive behavior. And it's redeemable, the officer notes what they observed, and there's a tear-off section where the student or the youth gets a slice of cheese pizza or a lykic kump at Coldstone Creamery with one mix-in. That's serious.
That's an important part.
I'm going to go behave also. And so it's, I've been getting emails from residents and parents who just think it's a great way to connect our police officers with the youth in the community. So I thank the police department and I encourage all parents to remind their kids to be on their best behavior.
Thank you.
And I thank you to Coldstone Creamery and Pirate's Pizza for stepping up and providing the incentive.
Trustee Davis Ford?
Yeah, I'm going to follow Trustee Cullen. I'm going to keep this short. I'll give you more time.
Thank you.
And the only thing I really want to bring up regarding the Legal and Personnel Committee is that there's been an extensive process of really scrubbing the code. It's on the Legal and Personnel Committee for some vetting, and we will put that on the next agenda for priority. For those of you who don't understand what the code means, it is the Bible or the rules and regulations that governs the legislative or governmental body of a municipality or any legislative body, in this particular instance, the Village of South Orange.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Levison?
Yes, I'm going to be short as well. One of the major pieces that we've done in the last month is the completion of the dispatch center in the police department. And there's a wonderful article in the Village Green that describes both the before and after and the list of items that we implemented within that dispatch facility. Other than that, I'm going to pass on to the next.
People should definitely look at that article though. There are some really good photos from the before and after. You can see, we talk about police and IT investment up here all the time, and Trustee Levison always talks about it. Those before and after pictures show you pretty clearly what that means. Trustee Schnall?
So I'm just going to point out a couple of things. The Recreation Cultural Arts Committee has been addressing a couple of issues around the capital issues regarding the tennis courts, the lighting, the pool. So that's something we'll be taking on actually in our next capital budget time. But other than that, the programming is going well. The camps will be ready, the pool will be ready, and that's in good shape. I do want to point out a couple of big events coming up. The next one, within less than three weeks, is the SOPAC Gala. On Saturday, May 30th, we'll be vetting--
Who started that applause?
Couple of strangers back there. We'll be vetting three local honorees, Johanna Wright, Fred Pofetta, and Paul Pofetta, all three of which have done a tremendous amount for our community. So we get a chance to honor them. And the performer, Brian Stokes Mitchell, who is a unbelievable, he's one of the leading men in Broadway, and just, he actually was involved, he was in Ragtime years ago and for the Columbia High School production. He came out, so he also is recognizing our community, and we get a chance to recognize some great people. So the tickets I know are going relatively quickly. I suggest folks get out there and purchase their tickets. There's a couple of different tiers that you can come in on. There's also an advertising journal, so please get yourself involved and hopefully several of the board members will be attending, and it'd be nice to see everybody there. Also, that's the end of May, that's May 30th. The end of June is the upcoming South by South Orange Festival. It will be a three-day event. The website is gone live, just went live last week on Friday, so check it out. The website is www.southbysouthorange.org, or if you don't want to type all those letters, it's S-O-X-S-O dot O-R-G. And you can learn more about it, and we'll talk about that more in the future, so let's go.
All right.
Alex, before you move on, because he has no report today, I just wanted to send a big thank you to trustee Walter Clark for an amazing river day, the Environmental Commission, all the groups. That was, how many volunteers total?
Ooh, it was a rough guesstimate, but we think we had 300, 400 people who actually got in the river and about 750 total, just passing through, being involved in a whole bunch of different ways.
And how much?
Slow clap.
Four times.
Yeah, all right, how much tonnage?
Yes, four times. Four times a stop. Thank you to the Environmental Commission and the Green Team and everybody else who hopped out with that.
And those saute weeds--
Many, many, many hands make light work.
And those saute weeds taste really good.
It's part of the Healthy Cooking Initiative.
How you can forage in your own community. There's a lot of weeds you can eat.
So what I'd like to do at this point in time is, we're done with the bulk of our business for the evening, and we've got our Master of Ceremonies slash Village Administrator, Barry Lewis, who I'm going to hand things off to, who's just going to take us through the last couple agenda items for this, which is my final Board of Trustees meeting.
Is this the part where he goes into a roast?
Yes. That's what we need. Wait, that's not what we've been doing so far.
Oh, I am ready.
So, and again, thank you all for joining us, and as everyone I believe knows, this is Alex's last meeting as our village president. We've got a big election tomorrow. Certainly encourage everyone to get out there and vote, exercise your constitutional right. But it's been, I think, and Alex will certainly speak to the personal impact, but I wanted to say a few words, and we have another dignitary, I think, who wants to come up and say something, and then Alex will give us his final words and have a mic drop. So, you know, as you know, Alex got elected in May of 2011, four years ago. I don't know whether it was tomorrow or not, but close enough. And at the time, I know, certainly was the youngest village president in the history of the village, and from what I understand, certainly one of, if not the youngest mayor in the history of the state. And with that came, I think, a big responsibility, and I think Alex has certainly risen to the occasion. I had the pleasure of coming in about seven months after Alex got sworn in, so most of my tenure to date with the village has coincided with Alex. Certainly been a pleasure for me to work with him, to watch him grow in the office, grow as a man, grow as a person, mature. You know, his leadership has grown. I think he's shown a steady hand. There are a couple of points that I'd really like to highlight, just, and I think most people are aware of them. Alex has certainly been a champion of transparency, open government. I think under his tenure, we have seen an enormous growth in what the village has, makes available on our website via, you know, video minutes, documents. And he is ever vigilant in trying to push that even further to ensure that we are the most transparent that we can be, and quite frankly, to be a leader in transparency in the state. And that's a huge credit to Alex, something that I know, you know, he doesn't just talk the talk, he walks the walk, he pushes for it, he's a real believer in it, and I think the results here show that. Another one is technology. Alex is, you know, he's sort of the younger generation, I'm the older generation, I'm not on Facebook and Twitter and all that, but he certainly is. And he, I think, recognizes the importance of technology, social media, the outreach, the ability to reach our residents, to communicate to the residents. He has certainly continually pushed, certainly with the support and assistance of the Board of Trustees, the Finance and IT Committee in particular, to continually push the envelope with technological advances, IT advances, softwares, to the point where, you know, South Orange, I would put our record and what we have available up against, you know, virtually any municipality in New Jersey, and certainly against anybody our size in the country. And again, a lot of that's a credit to the leadership of Alex. Another one that, to me, and again, it's a credit to Alex, and it's certainly a credit to this entire Board of Trustees, is how far we have come in even in my short tenure here with employee morale, the overall, I think, just feeling good about working for South Orange, living in South Orange, the progress, the overall positive attitude. It has been a pleasure to see the entire governing body, and certainly with Alex's support, embrace, you know, the mutual respect for the employees. I know for a fact that the employees see it, they feel it. I think it reflects every day in the job that they do and how much they care about their job. So to me, that's been personally very satisfying, you know, to have Alex's leadership and to see the board behind that. And then finally, I think, is just the unbelievable amount of progress that has happened really in the last three and four years under Alex's tenure and certainly this board as well. You know, many of the seeds were laid by prior boards in terms of the redevelopment designations, recognizing that we needed to improve things, but just in Alex's, you know, relatively short tenure here, we've seen the infamous BIFIS site that we've now banished the word BIFIS into the lexicon of words we'll never say again, is now the Gateway, which is a fantastic project. We actually just had the ribbon cutting the other day together with a lot of their great new tenants. Third Valley's well underway, that used to be a parking lot and a contaminated gas station. So the progress, and those are just the seeds of beginning to show what's coming. And it's an exciting time in South Orange. Again, an enormous amount of that credit is to Alex's leadership and this Board of Trustees and the wisdom, the ability to make the right calls, to not go too far, but not sit idly by and do nothing. So it's been a pleasure for me to be here, and it's been a pleasure for me to get to know Alex. And I think I speak for the entire staff and everybody, all the department heads. Everybody on behalf of the village recognizes it. We have a little small token that we'd like to give Alex, and it's a little ironic because for somebody who's been the leader and had the ability to wield the gavel, he's used it very, very rarely. And that to me is a sign of a good leader, that you're not having to sort of, you know, gavel down chaos, but rather to encourage and allow good and open, fair debate. But in honor of Alex and his tenure, we have an engraved gavel and sat here, Alex Torpe, South Orange Village President, May 16th, 2011 to May 18th, 2015. So again, thank you, Alex, for everything you've done for the village, and again, for the personal relationship and the friendship. And if you'd come up, I'd love to hand you your gavel. Okay, as I noted earlier, we have another couple distinguished guests. Our county clerk, Chris Durkin, is here. Thank you for joining us. And of course, our Assemblywoman, Myla J.C., is here, and I know Myla, I think, would like to come up and have a few words. So Assemblywoman Myla J.C.
And those of you who know me know that I never talk a long time. And you'll be very happy to know that although this is beautifully written, I won't read it. I've had the pleasure of knowing Alex for quite a while, since he was an intern in John McCain's office. We spent quite a bit of time talking about a lot of things, and I think, I think you've done very well, and I'm very curious to see what comes next. But for now, it is my distinct honor and pleasure to, to give you on behalf of Governor Cody, Assemblyman McCain, and myself, and the entire legislature, both the Senate and the General Assembly, a joint legislative resolution. I'll show it to the audience. As I like to say, it is suitable for framing. We don't have the budget to frame it, but I can tell you where you can get a really nice framing. There are a couple of pieces in here that I'm going to read. Everything else, I think, has pretty much been covered. But what I would like to read is the part where it says, "Whereas the people of the State of New Jersey are genuinely indebted to hard-working and inspiring citizens." And there are many of those in this room here tonight, and certainly all of you serving are doing that. "It is not easy to sit where you sit. Although I have not served on a council, I have served on a Board of Education three times. It's very similar because it's personal. Personified by Alex M. Torpe, whose time and energies are devoted to improving the effectiveness of their communities and the quality of life for their neighbors. And whereas it is altogether proper and fitting for this legislature to recognize Alex M. Torpe and to salute him as an individual of outstanding character and exceptional determination, now therefore be it resolved by the Senate and the General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature-- excuse me, allergies-- hereby honors Alex M. Torpe, pays tribute to his meritorious history of leadership, service, and commitment, and extends sincere best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors. And I am sure I'm only part of a large group of people who are looking forward to those endeavors. Be it further resolved that a duly authenticated copy of this resolution, signed by the Senate President and the Assembly Speaker, and attested by the Senate Secretary and the Assembly Clerk, be transmitted to you, the honorable Alex M. Torpe."
Thank you.
Lastly, before we turn the mic over to Alex, and he promises to be brief, we would, and I'm sure it won't be the last we hear from Alex or from everyone regarding Alex, because we'll obviously have a reorganization next week that is the actual sort of formal turning over of the gavel, but I'd like to give the Board of Trustees an opportunity if they'd like any remarks tonight, and then after that, we'll see if anyone from the public would like to say anything.
Yeah, if I may, I think, yeah, we talked about, or I should say, you talked about Alex's achievements here within South Orange, and I mean, I'm certainly impressed as a young man who had a vision, seized an opportunity, and I think made the most of it, which is impressive in its own right. I think one of the things we didn't maybe touch on so much, which I'd like to mention, is just how much you have acted as the cheerleader in charge for South Orange. Within South Orange, certainly you've done a great deal, but outside of South Orange, you've traveled all over and have always promoted our town, to the point where, you know, I can't even get on Facebook anymore and not hear that South Orange president. But seriously, it's impressive, not just within the town, but without as well. Many impressive things, I do, does portend great things for the rest of your career. I'm very curious to see what's next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a similar, I can recount actually when Alex sat down with me when I was considering running two years ago. And Alex had pointed out that with six trustees, there's, you know, six times as many people to do the work of the legislative part, but the village president really sets a tone. And in a big part of that was what you said to me, that we had things going in the right direction in terms of how the village was running and what we were working on in terms of committees, but it was time to look outside, and it was time to market ourselves, it was time to take a leap forward. And you've done that in your use of technology, in setting an example with transparency. But I really think what you've done really well is getting people involved. So, you know, volunteerism is up in a large way. You've gotten people to react, not always positively, but one thing-- No, no, it's true. It's starting a conversation. We, as I said before, we don't always agree on things, and I think that's healthy. I think we've discussed that several times. I think getting people involved, not just the folks here on this dais, but our residents, and having conversations of what the best thing is for this village. And I really think that's where your leadership has excelled. You've taken us to have conversations about topics which hadn't been covered before, and-- You've taken us to have conversations about topics which hadn't been covered before and are a little scary because they're out in the frontier. And I think the use of technology and various things are, you know, are risky. And I think by leading us into that category, you've helped us a great deal. The other part, which I found terrific, was your way of involving younger, youth, in government. I know that's one of your pet projects. Maybe it's just because you want to find other people younger than you, if they're out there. But, you know, the times that we went down to Seton Hall and worked on projects together with them, because in that academic institution, there's some really great thinking. And you helped them to sort of galvanize that and to show them there is a way that young people can get involved very sincerely in their own community and make a difference. And for all those reasons, it's been a pleasure myself personally, and I think we've benefited a great deal by your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll say that over the past four years, when Alex first came in, it was a lot of trepidation, nervousness from both parts because we didn't know how he's done. And I think he grew into the position very well. And over the four years, he matured a lot and led the village much better. And I echo what Barry says, very much the morale of the employees and Village Hall was dramatically different than when he came in, and there was much improvement. I think the Ross brothers are going to be greatly disappointed in the number of threads will be started for Alex. And he'll be, maybe he'll be a participant now. But, yeah. Anyway, but I do wish Alex the best, and we do hope he stays involved when he can. And I think that you have a great future ahead of you in whatever you do, in whatever you choose to do. And we hope to see more of you around.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, I echo the similar accolades that the rest of the board has stated. But I think one of the most important items that you've brought to the board is the use of social media. Something that you started with, I guess, with the original flash mob and us understanding how the flash mobs are being organized, and the use of social media as part of our communication to the outward as well as receiving inwardly. And I think that's a huge benefit that we've had over the last four years. And I congratulate you, and I hope you well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My dear Alex, I promise you I'll be on my best behavior. Now, I'm not going to repeat my way because I'm very mischievous of how, do you remember how I used to introduce you when you first started?
I sure do.
Chris Durkin, you remember how I used to introduce him with fondness and whatever? But, you know, you've outgrown that nickname. You're really, really, I'm so proud of your growth and development. We've agreed on the majority of the things. And there are probably like nine, 0.9% that we didn't disagree, that we didn't agree on, but I think we disagreed respectfully, and that's really important to me. I think that that's the way you should comport yourself. You lobby for what you believe is right, and if you don't agree with the body, that's okay, but just do it respectfully. And I just want to end this with, I'm proud of how we, together as a board, we really work well together, don't we, guys? And we get crap done. And with that said, for a young man to come in this role with a mature and seasoned board, and for you to be able to work well with us, and for us to allow you to grow in your role, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you. And if there's anything that I can ever do as I watch you in your journey forward, just pick up the call. Pick up the phone and call me.
Thank you.
Can we use your gavel?
My turn. Alex? Alex?
I'm ready.
So I've got a good story because I think we know Alex the village president, but do you all know Alex the man? So I was the, before becoming a member of the Board of Trustees, I was the chair of the Citizens Public Safety Committee. And Alex was the village president at the time, he was the OEM coordinator. And I guess it's through moments of crisis that you learn the type of person that you're with or who someone really is. And so, you know, I took the week off of work when Hurricane Sandy happened, and I called Alex. I'm like, hey, I have some time, if you need anything, you know, let me know. And he was like, yes, please, I'll come pick you up. So put on my Surt vest, magenta cargo pants, and I was ready for action. And to watch Alex, I mean, that was probably one of the toughest times for our village over the course of that two weeks. I don't think he ever slept. And we were driving to people's homes and special needs residents, and he just wanted to keep going. I mean, I got tired. I normally don't get tired, but I was cold and I was hungry and I was just kind of miserable. And he had two phones going, and he was still like driving me around to go knock on doors. And that's kind of when we bonded, I guess, if that's the right word, because I didn't really see him as a village president, but I saw him as somebody who cared deeply about people in this town. And, you know, you think you saw a bad beard appear several times. It was nothing like Hurricane Sandy.
Wow, you did shape. Look at you.
It's gotten better, but during Hurricane Sandy, I don't, I don't know. And that's really when...
That's why I didn't get cold.
That's how I got to warm. That's how I got to know Alex. And when we did a charity golf tournament for the South Orange Rescue Squad, you know, it's kind of the village president, you never really see or mayors like really get to the ground level of wanting to, you know, raise small amounts of money. And I was like, hey, Alex, do you want to go knock on doors with me? And he was like, okay. And so he walked Newstead and just spent several hours. And this was all before I was even on the Board of Trustees, and that was how I got to know Alex the person. And since being on the Board of Trustees, we've had some good debates, good arguments, but I still carry it...
No, not arguments, discussions.
Discussions, healthy discussions. And ultimately, I think that everything that you've done has been in the best interest of the people in this community, whether we've always agreed or not. And I've valued you as our village president. More importantly, I value you as a good person. And more importantly than both, I value you as a friend. And so I thank you for the past four years, for servicing, for serving with me with, you know, all of us for the past two, and I wish you everything, all the good that the world can bring back to you over the next upcoming years in your life.
Thank you.
Can I just ask, make a request? And I don't know if that person is agreeable, but he is here, if Barry, our administrator, to see if, I see two people, I see Chris Durkin here, and I also see the president of the Orange Municipal Council here. They may want to say a few words.
Yes, certainly. And as I indicated, we're the board, and thank you all for your comments. We're going to open up to the public. This is, certainly if you have things, we'd encourage you, any parting remarks you have for Alex, any stories are great. It is also open to the public for anything that you want to speak about, but if you stray from that topic, then we'll, but, so now, yeah, again, open to the public. There's, you can come up here, there's a microphone down there. We're open to the public for any topic, as we always are, twice a meeting, one of Alex's reforms that he instituted. But then certainly including any remarks anyone would like to make, to say goodbye to Alex.
I'm Joanne Dads from 260 Montrose Avenue, and our family has lived here, had the privilege of living here for 14 years. I will say very passionately that we have not had a village president like Alex Torpe. He has transformed this village. Leadership has no age. Leadership has no age. This young man, this old man, this soul was born to lead. And I know that so many people here are indebted to you because we can be in our homes at night, know that we are safe, know that we are progressing, know that we are united, know that we are a unique place unlike many places in this world. And you led us there. Don't take that lightly. There are very few like you. And you've also done it with great humility. Your humility is what makes you even greater. And you've inspired us to be our best, and that's what a great leader does. A great leader remains quiet and brings the best out in the people around them. And you have really excelled in that area. So I congratulate you. And I hope someday we can vote for you for a great, great leadership position, other than the village president of South Orange. Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Trustee Walter Clark, Sheena Column, Deborah Davis Ford, Howard Levison, Mark Rosner, Steve Schnell, and village president Torpe, thank you for your service and thank you for these two minutes. I love South Orange. Although I was raised in Maplewood, so much of my childhood was spent in South Orange. I attended Our Lady of Sorrows School, graduated from South Orange Middle School before going on to Columbia High School. Although it's a magical place, it's never been better than it is today. I just remember growing up at Baird Community Center and sledding Flood's Hill and playing soccer at Camberfield and all of the celebrations at the restaurants in South Orange. Just an amazing, amazing memory. Six years ago, I met Alex Torpe. I was looking for someone to design my website as I was running for county clerk, and a mutual friend put us together. We met at Reservoir Restaurant, and we hit it off because we had mutual interests. And not only did he do a great job, I won, thank goodness, all because of you. But then, two years later, again, we met at Reservoir Restaurant, and we met almost monthly. And Alex told me that he wanted to run for village president. He felt that he had a vision for that position. And, you know, I think he's accomplished an incredible amount of things, transparent government, government that works for the people. What I admire most about Alex is his youth, right? But I'll never, I cannot believe, you know, I think of me at 23, 24, and Alex never took for granted the trust and the privilege the people of South Orange gave to him. He worked every day to give back to a community that has given him so much. I'll just close by saying this. Tonight and tomorrow signifies the greatness of America. Tonight, we see government work, and we pay tribute to you, Alex, and to all of the people who serve South Orange, the almost 17,000 people. And tomorrow, the people of South Orange will go to the polls and elect a new village president, a peaceful transition of government. They will elect three village trustees who will have a renewal, who will recommit themselves to the ideals of South Orange, they will recommit themselves to the oath of public service, and they will recommit themselves to the beautiful people of South Orange. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, loyal staff of South Orange and South Orange residents. I bring you greetings from the great city of Orange Township, where I'm a city council at-large member and council president. So Alex, thank you for being here. Of course, I knew about this last meeting because of social media. I invited everybody out. But I remember, so I know Alex from a difference, from a distance, because I know him through social media. And I remember when he started his campaign, and it's, I mean, it really grabbed you from Facebook, the words, it was crisp, it was clear, it was independent, you just wanted to know who Alex was. So I picked up the phone and I called Chris, and I said, Chris, who's Alex? And I said, did you see his website is awesome? He said, yes, I know. And he told the story about you doing his website that he told me. And then just going on and watching and reading about you. I am also an employee of the union that represents the professors of CUNY where Alex graduated. And I know that's probably where some, a great part of his leadership, because CUNY really teaches his students to be a part of society, the community, and civically engage. So what you have done from afar, I am very proud. And for those who are talking about his social media, don't limit him. Because if you haven't read, he's also been a contributor to Reader's Digest, and I was very proud of that. And I posted it on my Facebook page as well. So thank you, and we know you're going to do great things in the city of Orange, which is you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your remarks and... It looked like anybody else waiting? Oops, I'm sorry. Got to jump up.
I haven't gotten made fun of enough yet, so...
I'm not going to roast you today, Alex. I personally never met Alex Torpe. The first time in four years I've seen him, so it's nice. But how do you follow Chris Durkin? Jesus, God bless America. I'm going to sing the national anthem and bring down a house. I just want to say one thing, Alex, and I'll say this. One thing I always appreciated as the police chief was Alex always stood back in the background and allowed me to do my job. And I can't speak for the department heads, but I believe that to be the case. He stood off in the background and allowed people to do their job. And when you think about a public servant, I think Alex Torpe personifies that word. I think the true measure of an individual is not when he stands upright, but rather when he stoops to help another. And I know Alex Torpe from not just being a mayor, but from working on our rescue squad. I know the countless number of hours that he puts in with our rescue squad, and I can just say that the residents of South Orange were very fortunate to have him serve as the mayor here in South Orange. I just want to wish you all the best. I'm sure you'll be, go on to be governor, president, and Chris Durkin will be with you, so.
Mark Hartwig, Fife Mead Street. I've been living there for about two years. Alex, on behalf of the South Orange Parking Authority, Board of Commissioners, myself, our staff, we just wanted to wish you a lot of luck going forward. Unlike everybody else's experiences, Alex never came to me with any problems, right, Alex?
Not one.
We only bonded over things like Zipcar, Lot 7 transitions, just little things like that. Alex, the board had considered offering you a lifetime parking pass. But when they realized you'd have it for the next 70 years, they decided to retract that offer. But all the best.
Thank you.
Trustees and village president Torpe, my name is Tony Lightner, 36 Wigwood Terrace, Maplewood, and 9 West South, West South Orange Avenue, South Orange. Alex, you have epitomized one of the reasons why Jennifer and I located out here 36 years ago. And that is a sense of community and volunteerism that represents both of our communities of South Orange and Maplewood. It's folks like yourself and all of the trustees here who step forward for all the pay you get, and that includes folks on the Board of Education and other things that make our community work, that deserve all of our credit and respect. Whether we always agree with you or disagree with you, it doesn't matter. I want to particularly thank you in my capacity as chairman of the Board of SOPAC for your service on our board, because the village president sits by designation under our bylaws on our board, for all you have done for us and with us as a member of the board. Again, another piece of your time and commitment. So we thank you. We're glad we can host you in our wonderful space. I want to second, hope to see you at the gala. It's going to be great as we celebrate the arts in our community, particularly at Columbia High School. We'll be delighted to see many of the Columbia High School students performing here, hopefully with our guest artists. So hopefully... So hopefully we can see you then. And again, thank you for all you've done for the community and for us.
Thank you.
Good evening, all staff and honored servants of the village of South Orange. I'm Janine Buckner, currently less than a year resident at 9 Bose Avenue, but I think I've been in town a little bit longer than that. Three reasons why I'm here. Number one, thank you, Mr. President, it's the last time I can call you that. Thank you so much for your dedication, your embodiment of representative, of servant leadership. Couple people have already mentioned this. So my second point and thanks is speaking on behalf of Seton Hall University. One of our missions is that we enable our students to live as servant leaders. And you represent that very well by, you know, most recently joining the educational endeavor as part of our community. And third thing was, I think we met six years ago when we were getting ready to talk about this thing called Neighborhood Watch. And we consulted, I think you came to my house to drop off cert flyers or something, and we started talking. And so because of you, I'm involved in town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Torpey and the board. Son of Joanne Downs, and I've been observing Alex Torpey over the last four years while I was at college, which I've definitely enjoyed. It's been nice seeing a mayor that has a presence online. And the moments I've been in town for about a week, every once in a while, I'll try to send Torpey a message. And it's nice that we have that option, the younger youth, since that's how we communicate. And then, moving forward and how we get more youth engaged, I'm now back after traveling for nine months, and I hope to have a presence in South Orange. But recently, I was part of the Riverdale cleanup with Seton Hall. I saw, you know, groups of 20 students marching through the river. You know, it's grown and grown over the years, which has been amazing. I'm someone who's dedicated to the environment. But I think there's more, more opportunities for collaboration in the village. It's a very small community. And while just using this river as an example, the first half of the river is very clean, but as all the athletes know, we've all launched softballs and soccer balls that float into the river all the way down to the municipality. And while we're cleaning up, we actually had a lot of softballs launched at us. And it's kind of, for me, was symbolic that there's, you know, sometimes groups that are responsible that could get more involved here in the village. And I think if we are going to continue to try to target the youth here in town, that we should have more opportunities for teams to get involved. At Seton Hall, the teachers actually offered their students extra credit to get into the river, which I thought was amazing. So I think as we transition governments and we get movement and collateral that you've started, I hope we start seeing more opportunities for collaboration here in the village. And thank you for your service.
Thank you. And thank you. I'm guessing a couple of those baseballs from the river were my first pitches.
Yeah, right.
Thrown out.
President Torpey, on behalf of the Board of Governors, Staff, Volunteers, and Artists of the South Orange Performing Arts Center, I wish to express my deepest thanks to you for your unwavering support of our organization and for your amazing leadership of the village of South Orange. I know that serving as a president of the village has been both rewarding and quite challenging. But your stewardship of our municipal government has brought about an amazing renaissance in this community, and you leave a legacy of transformation and growth in South Orange. From the first time I met you, I was awed by your intellect, your enthusiasm, and your passion for this community. And after 29 years of interacting with state legislators and myriad administrations, with the exception of Myla Jaycee, I had become quite jaded by politics. Seeing you devote your time and energies for the betterment of this town has been inspirational for me and gives me a sense of hope that young people like you are, that you still care deeply about the civic agenda. And for that, I'm truly grateful. You will be missed. I wish you the best of luck in the next chapter of your life, and thank you again for your commitment to seeing our organization flourish and realize its potential for South Orange.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, thank you all for your remarks. And we're going to close with Alex's parting remarks. So with no further ado, I'm going to turn the mic over. He's promised to be briefer than the State of the Village.
That leaves a lot of gray area.
Big V, small V.
Yeah, we're going to put the timer up. I do promise this will be shorter than the State of the Village, but do mind you, that was an hour and 15 minutes.
You want us to move to a drone now?
Yeah, not quite, not quite. So I just want to, I do have a couple remarks here. And so this was, yeah, no. So this, when I think back, and I've obviously spent a fair amount of my time recently reflecting on this past four years and kind of past six years. And as I was finishing up Hampshire in the spring of 2009, I was starting to look, look into more ways to get involved around town. Before I graduated, I started talking to a few folks around town about ways to get involved, including with Assemblyman John McKeon at the time, who I had done some internship work and met in high school. And one of the more interesting prospects in South Orange at that point was a conversation I was having with Mary Thoreau, who used to be a trustee here in South Orange, is Assemblywoman Jaycee's chief of staff. And it was about the library board, which she also served on. So when I got back from college, and I actually looked up the email earlier, this is on May 19th, I emailed Mary early in the morning to let her know I was back home from college, degree and everything, and really interested in, you know, diving in however I could as soon as possible in town. So on the 19th, I must have gone out around town, I don't know what I was doing, doing various things. And I got home at about 7:15 and checked my email. And I saw that there was an email from earlier that afternoon from Mary saying, "Hey, it's Tuesday night, you should come to a library board meeting tonight. Everybody, you should be there tonight." And I remember at that moment, as I started to kind of rush to get over to the library board for this meeting that was starting in 15 minutes, this was pre-elected official life where there was the possibility that you could be on time for something. And as I started heading over, I remember making the plan in my mind and said, "Okay, tomorrow, I need to go buy a cellphone that has email on it." So I didn't miss anything. My senior year of college, I spent pretty much every day writing a thesis, so I was kind of in front of my computer and email all day. And when I got back, I bought this really advanced piece of technology, this BlackBerry, the next day. And it was amazing, it's amazing reflecting a little bit on the history of the library from earlier tonight, but that was only six years ago. And now we're talking about technology and social media and all these things, six years ago that I remember not even having email on my phone. But almost down to the day, that was May 19th, six years ago, that was my first meeting that I attended at the library board, to which I would later get appointed to, which was the place where I got to meet Melissa, our library director, and so many others who would further encourage and inspire me to get more involved in town. But then, the library board meetings weren't the exact first place where I started to get involved in South Orange. It wasn't the start of my experience in this community. That happened in the late 80s, 1989, when my parents moved to Maplewood from the city. I don't remember every single detail from that time period, but from our house on Kendall Ave, Maplewood, to Terrell and South Orange, going from Marshall to Jefferson to Maplewood Middle, to South Orange Middle, to Columbia, the forthcoming years here would shape who I was slowly beginning to grow up to be. And these values instilled not just by my parents and family, who are, by the way, here. If, I don't know if you guys would mind waving or standing up or something, my parents and my sister in the back. A little round of applause. They've been putting up with me for a very long time. And it was the values that they taught me, and I think the values that my parents' parents taught them, that are also part of growing up in this community. And these are values of respect for one another, of working hard, of open-mindedness, especially towards people who aren't exactly like you are, and the importance of defining success how you see it. But that whatever it is you do decide to do, it should be something that does good for others. There's always this larger context to events and your actions, growing up in Maplewood and South Orange. And kind of combined with what my family taught me, laid the foundation for what would end up coming next. Those values are why I went to that first library board meeting, why I joined the rescue squad and started writing for the news record and got involved with community emergency response team, and started going to town meetings and committee meetings and joined our Citizens Public Safety Committee. You know, those values are why, you know, when I was 23 years old, without really any income, without a ton of experience, someone might expect someone running for office to have, while in the middle of getting my master's degree under what I thought at the time was a lot of student debt, why I chose to run for office. Those values are why I did it, even though a lot of the best advice at the time and the traditional thoughts kind of suggested another path. But those values are also why none of those things really mattered at the end of the day, because there was something much larger at stake. It's why I think a lot of the people that are here tonight, up here and in the audience and that are watching at home and involved do it, because of these values and they see their actions always in a larger context. And I think that events and circumstances all around the country and world and show us more conclusively than anything ever could how important these values are. Much more important than we may think our differences are, or our political opinions, or anything like that, but that these values that we hold so dear to us in South Orange are not that commonplace in the rest of the world, and they're not that commonplace in the civic space in New Jersey and in the United States, and certainly not as commonplace as they should be. But that's our responsibility to change that. Beyond any one idea or any one policy or any one initiative, beyond taxes or crime or redevelopment or any of that, I think it's our duty to ensure that these values, which are the prerequisite, the bedrock of democracy, innovation, justice, and progress, are values that are part of what it means to grow up in South Orange, what it means to grow up in New Jersey, what it means to grow up in this country, and what it means to grow up in this world. This is our burden, but it is also our opportunity. About 1,459 days ago, I was given an opportunity by those who live in this town to pursue my passion, to get the chance to be a leader and to help shape a community that for more than two decades, as Chris mentioned, helped shape me. And it was an opportunity to experiment, to learn, to grow, to mature. And as South Orange has evolved and grown over the past four years, so have I. It was an opportunity to hold elected office, in New Jersey no less, without having to identify myself with a political party, without having to do anyone any favors or ever come close to compromising my values or my ethics, without having to do anything other than try to make South Orange better and learn as much as I could to apply towards whatever endeavors may await me in the future. And we've done that, right? We're controlling costs. We've had four years of the lowest tax increases in more than 15. We're paying down our debt, saw over a 40% reduction in crime while continuing to improve already great relationships between our police and our community. We're seeing, we've seen and are seeing hundreds of millions of dollars of economic investment in the downtown, which is bringing new businesses in all the time, three of which we just cut ribbons for the other day, which will make a huge impact on everybody's taxes in the coming years. We've provided better support for those who keep us safe. We've set records and models for transparency and sustainability, and better supported our arts and cultural events around town, and created more and more places and events for people to come hang out with each other, which is especially important in a day where we do so much online. We've made our village government a place, a better place to work, and we've made our government a better space to be involved with. I'm not going to repeat the whole State of the Village, as Barry alluded to. Suffice to say, I'm not exaggerating when I say that every indicator of municipal government performance has improved over the last four years. And that's thanks to a monumental, monumental effort of so many people, not just that my colleagues up here on the board, the trustees, our administration, and the department heads, and all the staff in town, and all the residents, and students and business owners who've stepped up and volunteered and found ways to get involved and contribute something positive to this community. For me personally, this position and this role, this has never been a social calling. It's not been a job, or it certainly doesn't pay like it's been a job. And it's not been a hobby either. I didn't do it to make friends or go to fundraisers or see my name in the paper. And there are, in fact, many aspects of a more public life that I find very personally challenging. But for those of you who know me well, and there are a handful of you here and watching tonight, you know how deeply serious I take all of this. It's pretty much impossible to get me to talk about anything other than new ideas about government, intellectual conundrums, philosophies of governance, and my utter fascination and appreciation for all the people who do everything that they do to make the lives that we all live actually possible. So in between the laughs and the jokes, and yes, the comically sometimes overgrown beards, taking an opportunity, a position of constitutional, of statutory legal responsibility and authority like this, especially at a young age, and doing everything you can to try and maximize your impact on others, there's obviously been incredible ups and downs that are beyond description on both a professional and a personal level these past four years. Maybe one day I'll figure out how to talk about those. But what I do know and what I can say is that it has been an unbelievable unparalleled gift, something that has changed my own life in so many ways and given me what I want really more than anything else, which is the opportunity just to have a positive benefit on the lives of people around me. Four years later, I'm confident in not just the work that I have done and sparked and inspired, but how much, and how much that I've learned and grown, but the work that all of us collectively have done, and how much we all have collectively learned and grown. When this town has been pushed to the limit, which we have several times over the past four years, the people who work here, the people who serve here in elected capacity, people who do business here, people who go to school here, everybody stepped up and found ways to work together like people should. So now I'm 27 years old, and I have had this insane, unique opportunity. And unlike Ben Wyatt from Parks and Rec, we have done actually a very good job moving our town forward. And I hope that there are young people that are watching this and are thinking about this, and they realize that, yes, they can make a real difference, as long as you're willing to work hard and work together with other people, and as long as you're willing to admit that you don't know everything, but never rest in your attempt to. To some of my closest friends, some of whom are here, four and a half years ago, I told them I was running for office, and pretty much after they said, "Are you crazy?", they were 100% on board to do everything they could to help, knocking on doors, putting up signs, calling people, helping organize events. And without those really, really early conversations and the belief in me from some of my closest friends that early on, none of this would be possible. And to everyone who voted for me, thank you for taking a little bit of a risk, and I do hope that you believe it's paid off. And to everyone who didn't, and all the residents in town, to my colleagues up here, not just the trustees that are sitting up here to my left, to my right, but our administration, our clerk's office, our legal counsel, all the unbelievably hardworking and professional staff in town, they are pros beyond what most people realize, who make all of us elected officials look good with how well they do their jobs. Again, especially Barry and Adam and Kathy and administration, and Susan and Chanel and our clerk's office, to our chiefs, all the department heads and staff from Public Works, to the police, fire, and rescue squad of public safety, to finance, and IT, and tax, and purchasing, to health and engineering, building, and code enforcement, to recreation and cultural affairs, to the library, to SOPAC, to the Village Center Alliance, to the Parking Authority, or courts, dozens of other organizations and people that make this village work. And these people are without comparison in how well they do their jobs. It's easy to be on the outside of government and be critical, and a lot of folks, many up here, many in the audience who are involved in government, when you do get involved, you go inside and you see how hard people are working to make a difference. It's incredible. I know I've learned a lot from a lot of the people sitting up here. I have tried to pay attention as close as I can to the expertise of our department heads and of our trustees and of our administration. out in the next week, we have an election on a Tuesday, and you get sworn in the following Monday. I don't know, I have, I'm certainly not a scholar of forms of government, I have never heard of another form of government with that quick of a turnaround time, ever. And I remember after the election, and it was so close, I remember going to Chris Durkin's office on Wednesday to see how many provisional ballots there were, and fortunately, there were less provisional ballots than there were by my lead, so there was no way, even without actually opening them and counting them, we could have, we could call the election. And I remember getting a book from the New Jersey State League of Municipalities, it's a League of Municipalities Desk Book. It's basically a summary of statutes that apply to municipal government. This summary book is 700, 800 pages, and that was my weekend reading. And that was the most unbelievably small tip of the iceberg of how complicated all of this is. The people that are up here, the people that are not up here, that work for the town, the amount of expertise required to keep all of this going the way that it does, and not only keep it going, but actually continue to innovate and continue to make it better, it is mind-boggling. And it has changed the way that I think about so many different things, getting to be surrounded by so much expertise and hopefully learning as much as I can throughout all of these different very odd circumstances. I never thought I would learn about how water systems work, and those were my first meetings in your law firm offices, Steve. We had many, many hours and many half sandwiches talking about East Orange Water and learning about how water systems were put together, something I really had no idea I would need to learn in that much detail when I was running for office. And there's a million more things like that, some of which are challenging like that, some of which have been a privilege, for example, being able to marry people, and especially being able to perform same-sex marriages here in South Orange. And so, I want to make sure to thank fully all of my colleagues up here and all of the staff and everybody, because this, the expertise that they have has not gone unnoticed by me, I don't think it goes unnoticed by the people who live in town, and the people in town are very lucky to have the people working here and serving them that they do. And I want to make sure to thank my incredible and patient and understanding business partners, Aaron Trust Garcia and Ryan Morgan, and that's a whole other side of life that isn't represented up here, that has been an incredible journey as well. And to my family, my parents, Beth and Bill, and my sister Kate, my grandparents, my entire family, cousins, aunts, uncles, and so many of my friends that have also been putting up with all of this, what you're hearing right now, for a very long time. And to so many of you who were supportive four years ago and throughout the past four years. And even to the curmudgeons, thank you Maplewood Online. And I won't go into the lessons that I learned there, but I will say, I do thank everybody and everything that has happened, because it has taught me what I know, which is a lot more than what I knew four years ago. And I hope that four years from now, I'll know a lot more than I do right now, but in such an incredibly epic and powerful way, South Orange has truly, without any way to compare it to anything, shaped who I am today and who I will be for decades to come. And that's a person who I know many of you do believe in to help make the world a better place. And that belief and that support, I don't think I often let on how important that belief in me is, but it really means the world. And I can't really believe that I'm sitting up here, four years after getting elected mayor of my hometown, just two years out of college, in my last meeting, getting ready to take on this, whatever the next adventure in life is, and that so many of you are here in person and in spirit and to support that, and that means a lot. It really does. I hope that over the course of my life, I hope that I can repay your support by doing everything I can to continue to find ways to make the lives of those around me better, and always fight for what is right, and always fight for what is just and what is equitable in the world, and using everything that I have learned here and will continue to learn to do so. We've got a lot of work to do here still in town, which I'm confident will continue on this amazing path of progress, but globally, we need so much more help. I'm pretty sure that after meeting all the people that I have in town over the past four years, and around the country and around the world, and gotten to see what so many people are capable of doing when given the opportunity to participate in making your community, however you may define it, better, I'm confident we will meet all of those challenges. And again, on a very personal note to everyone here, everybody up here, I, the words definitely cannot express how much I appreciate everything over the last four years. And it means a lot, and I think that all of us will be doing incredible things, and I am really excited to see the direction that South Orange is going in. I'm excited to see all the different projects that are getting started now that I'm like, god damn, I wish I could work on that more. And again, I just, I can't thank all of you enough, and all of our staff who aren't here, and just all of you who've been so supportive. So, with that, I would just like to call for my final motion from the Board of Trustees to adjourn this meeting. Moved by Trustee Schnall, seconded by Trustee Rosner. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sure there will be none opposed. Thank you, everybody.
Alex, I can't believe it.
Very short, right?[1687.75]